All right, we will get started with the study session. Today's topic is property casualty insurance, excuse me, renewal process and state of the marketplace. And I'll let the city manager introduce the topic further.
We've got a couple of subject matter experts that advocate in our behalf that we'll quickly turn it over to, but as a little bit of an overview, we do have a staff position. The title is Risk Manager. You may recall Nancy Schussler in the city manager's office is the risk manager. She couldn't be with us today, but she handles risk management issues, insurance renewals, insurance premiums and claims and deductibles on behalf of the city day in and day out. And in addition to that, we have what was formerly known as Assurance Partners. It's now Iron Insurance Partners that serves as our insurance broker as it relates to a number of lines of insurance that we carry. And then we also have Charlesworth and Associates that serve as our risk management consulting services. So between the two of those, Charlesworth kind of provides us overall consulting as it relates to risk management and other insurances. And then Iron Insurance Partners is actually the brokers that go out to the market and help us secure insurance coverage. You may recall in your, well, I think across the insurance industry, as a policy approaches renewal, you typically don't get a renewal quote until very close to the renewal date, which you may recall that that puts us in an awkward position on occasion where we're waiting on the quote to come in. And if we experience a rate increase, it doesn't really give us a lot of time to decide whether we want to go back out to the market and solicit alternate proposals. And there's some ramifications of that as well. So in the last few years, we've started at least having a preliminary conversation with the governing body in advance of receiving a renewal quote to, number one, kind of assess what we think the market's doing, but then secondly, have a conversation about should we go to the market? Should we try to solicit quotes? So between Mr. Charlesworth and Mark Skidmore with Iron Insurance Partners, they plan to provide us that overview and kind of have that conversation with us in anticipation of what the market might look like this year. So I'll turn it over to James.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. Good afternoon. Nice rainy jury Monday. Appreciate that. I thought I would just talk real quickly about kind of how the cadences between mid-year and the renewal. And then I'll turn it over to Mark to talk more details about where we're at with your renewal coming up. So about six months in advance to the insurance, we will have a stewardship meeting hosted by Mark and his team. We'll kind of talk about what the market's doing, what our losses look like, what our history looks like, et cetera, et cetera. From that meeting, we'll develop a strategy as to are there new markets? Are there somebody that might be interested? Is it a good time to bid? Is it not a good time to bid? From there, we start build the timeline. And normally by the first of April, sometime in March, we try to get an indication from the insurance community as to what they think our renewal, July 1 renewal is going to look like. It's important to note that we have, we being Mark and his team has aggressively shopped the insurance the last couple of years. We have to be careful not to shop too much. You get insurance fatigue, you know? The underwriters start seeing it year after year after year, and it's not good for the city in the long run. So in March and April, I'm sorry, I went to the final four and I had a cough and it's, I still have it, but what a weekend. So depending on what we hear, we start to try to measure expectations. What's the market doing? So the last couple of years, we've gotten quotes from BRIT. BRIT was then purchased by OneBeacon, which is now Intact. And now Intact has pulled out of government. So in one failed swoop, we lost three markets. We lost OneBeacon, Intact, and BRIT. And those were, that was the only group of companies that had ever really expressed much interest in the city. You're with Travelers. Travelers is probably the strongest and most consistent market for public entities in the central part of the United States, if not the entire United States. Again, we like to shop about every three to five years when we can. The indications came in, what I think is competitive. Keep in mind that our firm, we don't sell insurance, and so we're marketing insurance all the time for other cities throughout Kansas, Missouri, Texas, South Dakota, Nebraska. So we kind of have an idea what the market's doing. And based on conversations with Travelers, we felt that Travelers renewal was going to be probably consistent with the market trends. Now, that means an increase. Mark will talk about that a little bit, but we thought it would be good to have this conversation, let you ask questions, so that in June, May, June, when we're presenting this, this isn't a big shock to you. But the caveat to that is it's hard to get good renewal numbers more than 30 days in advance. So it really compresses the timeline. That's not because I'm lazy, Mark's lazy, his team's lazy. It's just how the market is. They really, especially when we, in an active weather season, in active weather patterns, they like to wait as long as they can to release those numbers. The exception to that is cyber. In cyber, you're lucky to get the numbers finalized more than three or four days in advance. I have a council meeting tomorrow night for a May 10 renewal, and I'm still waiting on the, I'm still waiting on the final number. So that's going to be a challenge going forward. So before I turn it over, do you have any questions for me? And then I'll let Mark talk a little bit about the state of the market. Thank you, Mayor.
While Mark's come up, just to let folks know, Commissioner Ryan is, has joined us via Zoom, so you do have all five commissioners here.
Oh, perfect. Do you have the PowerPoint present?
He does.
Oh, perfect.
There you go.
What I had put together last week, the week before, before Friday night occurred, was just kind of a state of the marketplace. And we can go through there, and I'll talk about a few of the slides. It's just been a really rough market with property, right? Catastrophe losses. Some of it is the changing weather patterns, right? And then we have the Texas winter freeze, was that last year? That did not discriminate against anything, right? It was just, everything was freezing. Western fires, right? Everybody hears talk of as we keep building out in the, in the mountains further away, more likely to burn. We've got those here in Kansas, too. Replacement costs, right? Everybody's dealing with inflation. Part of what I've, I've noticed the marketplace trying to do is even if they understood the weather patterns and the losses that were going to occur, the inflation was not predicted in their pricing 12 months, 24 months ago. Skilled labor shortage is driving up the replacement cost, right? It costs more to get everything fixed. Under insurance, Travelers estimates that 75% of businesses are underinsured by 40% or more. Then a big push from the insurance companies to make us actually insure to today's replacement cost number. So all that is driving increases. We're having conversations with Travelers right now concerning our values. And we have been proactive the last three or four years in taking value increases because James was actually telling us that he expected this to happen and kind of better to stay out in front of it and act like a good partner than to be forced to change our values by Travelers. So deductible increases, right? I stood in this room a year ago, and you guys elected to take a substantial deductible for wind and hail. But that's all over the board. Any, any large commercial account that I've got has dealt with some deductible deal in the last couple of years. Yeah, we can go to the next one. These are all the property claims, and I don't remember the total number for 2021, but there were at least $20 billion disasters last year. And you can see a few right around us. Remember, a few years ago, I was having a negotiation with Travelers, and they sent me their wind hail map and had a great big red bullseye right in the middle of the country. And I thought, gosh, we're not even at the side of it. I can't even make an argument. I mean, we were the center of the zone that they were worried about. So it just, it just never seems to stop right now, but. Increasing large scale claims, yep, billion dollar disaster events. This is, I think you guys got this in your handout, too, just based on CPI index adjusted. So as, as population grows and we keep building bigger things, last three years, you can see the number of events, 54 in the eighties, there were 31, I think. Increased cost of construction. What I think is interesting about this one, the three years compared to the eighties, the number of deaths has dramatically decreased. So, right, what happened Friday in Wichita, early warnings. I mean, the fact that we're always watching a news show somewhere, okay, at least there's some good that's come out of that in the fact that we have less deaths than we used to. December 15th, who would have thought we would have had, as I wait for my roof to get changed out, who would have thought we would have had a windstorm in the middle of December in Kansas, which then just leads itself to more unpredictability on the underwriters' side of things. You know, with, with the advent of computer and technology, they've got any question they want to ask their system at the touch of their finger. So, so they can make decisions much quicker than they used to when I started my career 28 years ago. Liability is also seeing a lot of pressure, frequency of sexual abuse claims, increased law enforcement liability claims.
I just want to clarify, that's not specific to us.
Not specific to us, correct. These are industry numbers. Social inflation, right? They talk about some of the, the nuclear verdicts. Travelers does a really good job of sending us out things that end up going to juries, and the judgments are just ludicrous. You know, I remember reading one a few years ago, and it was a $30 million judgment against a company. And I thought, oh, this is going to be J.B. Hunt, right? No, it was Bob's Excavating, right? It was a tragic accident. People died. There should have been something, but $30 million? So that's what nuclear verdicts are showing up in, just driving rate increases and retention increases. We've got a really nice program. We're on our casualty lines. We have a $50,000 deductible in-house and manage it with the risk management fund, and it's worked really well. But we're still getting pressure from a rate standpoint, even though we're insuring the first 50 of our liabilities. So cyber liability is, as James talked about, multi-factor authentication kind of came like wildfire, at least for me. I was only familiar with it because of COVID, and we were sending folks home. And during that COVID year, eight months later, it was a requirement for any insured to get cyber coverage was to have multi-factor. I think 94% of all attacks are coming from the fact that you don't have multi-factor authentication on some system. So social engineering, 15% of cyber claims in 2021 were in the public sector. And 150% rate increase has kind of been the norm on cyber policies. That was what I put together from a kind of a state of the industry. As I said, we are, we are right now negotiating with Travelers on our value side. Our, our rate and combination exposure increase. So if you think about it, on our premium, we get charged per police officer, right? So exposure increase would be if you add two police officers, right? We've got a bigger exposure side. Our rate and our, the flat rate increase and our exposure increase, we're trying to manage to a 12, 13% number for this year. And you guys might not have it, that's about a $70,000 increase, bottom line. So. And we were having those arguments with Travelers. They started last week, and they wanted us to increase our values by 8%. So, well, when we've got $100 million worth of insured property, 8% is a big number, even before we talk about the rate that they want to charge us.
So historically, and understandably, I've been in this business 30 years, too, and I remember 40 and 50% health insurance rate increases. And you get them and sign here, and the understandable reaction is, we got to find another way. Between you and James, that's partly why you're here, is to have the conversation now of if we see a rate increase like that, do we have options or what, what's the recommended course? Would rather have that conversation in advance than, you know, our backs against the wall. Not to say that we have a lot of options, but like to have that conversation with the governing body proactively rather than reactively.
Sure. In practicality, there's really not another guaranteed insurance marketplace out there that is a great fit for the city of Salina. That's, that's not to say that we can't go find other coverage, but at some point, we're going to Lloyds of London, and the price with Travelers is going to be much better. Is that a fair statement, I would assume? Then the only other, real other option we would have would be to kind of philosophically change the way we have traditionally bought insurance, and it would be to go to a pooling arrangement with some other municipalities.
What did we, what did we increase our deductibles last year? Do you remember how we kind of addressed that? And is that something that you'll come back to us again because of the rate increase, adjusting our deductibles?
I'm, I'm not expecting a deductible increase right now. What happened was Travelers went to a 1% wind and hail deductible from, I don't know what we had before. 50? We probably had 50 the prior year. When we presented to you all, we also presented a buy down option to buy down from 1% down to about $50,000, and you all elected not to do that.
Was that, was that a good or bad decision at this point?
Give me, give me another 60 days, I'll tell you.
Okay. I just want to know if we made a good or bad decision. I remember.
Yeah, I've got a lot of other clients that made the same decision. So you're not alone.
On that.
Go ahead.
And you know, we continue to, you know, here, and I know we have our, our claims in this area, but you know, you get to, you know, the western part of the United States where their fires are, you know, and properties or values are more. Do they give any breaks for regional when they price, or do they price everything together to kind of spread out their, their, their risk when they're pricing?
No, it's, it's based on regional.
Region.
Regional and exposure, too, right? I remember years ago, Nancy specifically asked me the question, well, how do we lower our premiums? Well, I looked at your five years' worth of claims history, and it was running at 60% or better. Well, you're not going to lower those premiums if you're taking 60 cents of every dollar we pay Travelers back out in claims.
Right.
Yeah, but, but to your point, though, there is a national impact on the overall profitability of an insurance company. So the wildfires, the hurricanes, they do have an impact on Travelers' appetite and their willingness to negotiate. So it's a combination of both. To your earlier point, you know, when the numbers come in, you know, we could look at, say, a 2% deductible and find what the price break would be there. So you have the information you need to make an informed decision. But there's only, there's only so much we can do. I mean, we could go from a $50,000 to a $100,000 liability deductible, and if we save 10 grand in premium, I'd be surprised. And I'm just not going to bring that to you. But that's, but we'll, we'll have a conversation to see any place that we might be able to trim.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but one of those transitions was that went from a deductible per occurrence to per building? So when we have a storm event, you know, when we talk about adjusting that deductible, we did experience that in the storm event where we had multiple buildings across our, our system that were impacted.
Yeah, not covered, right? We didn't, we didn't have a covered claim for the windstorm, and we would have had a year before.
Question, every, every time the issue of pooled coverage municipalities, the facial expression of whoever says it just kind of says, eh, but you don't want to look at that. I have some ideas.
I'll respond to that.
Why it might be that way, but.
Well, it's pooling.
I do some pool work right now.
I mean, pooling is just a different concept, and it's not insurance. One of the first things you'll see in a pooling, it's a coverage document, it's not an insurance document, it'll say, we are not, this is not insurance. It's a coverage agreement. To join the pool, you have to sign bylaws that will tell you how you can get, how you can get out. Normally, it takes 60, maybe 90 days notice before you can get out. And as we've expressed, we won't have a firm number 60 days in advance, so getting out can be a bit of a challenge. They are assessable. So if the pool does not have the assets to cover their losses, then they can come back to the members, and you would have to pay the assessment. On the flip side, if they do really well, they can pay dividends. So, you know, it really is, pooling is a, is a different concept that if I ever have a client that's interested in pooling, I always recommend having these kind of meetings to go through them, you know, talk to the pooling companies themselves, and, and really understand it, because it's not like buying insurance. It's more of a commitment to a different strategy. I know that Mark was talking about this weekend, school district loss down the Wichita area. It's a member of the pool, and it's going to be a big loss. You know, how's that going to impact the financial stability? As a, as a board, as a commission, you need to know what their reinsurance looks like. You need to know what their financials look like. You need to know how their audit turned out. You need to be involved. Travelers, Travelers got the money, you know? They're going to pay the claim. It's not, it's not about running out of money. And when you approve a premium, you're done. It's, they can't come back and say, yeah, we undercharged, we want another $50,000. So I, pooling is great for some, it's not for everybody.
Thank you.
Let me be clear on the deductible. It's 50,000 plus 1% per claim. Is that correct?
No, no. Currently, we have a 1% per building deductible on wind and hail.
It's subject to a minimum.
Yeah, there is a minimum.
Yeah, there's a minimum per, I don't know if it's per building or per occurrence. So it'd be a $50,000 minimum.
50,000 minimum.
25,000 for any other loss other than windstorm and hail.
And so the 1%, is the value of the building?
Of the building, not the loss.
I see.
So, you know, at the time of loss, if this was worth $2 million, you know, it'd be.
Can you come up to the?
I'm sorry. If this was a $2 million building, it would be 200, 20, 200,000?
10, 200, 20.
20. So we'd have to, we'd have the 50, and that's what, on that earlier loss, none of those deductibles hit that minimum. So we had to pay the entire claim.
In the windstorm in December, didn't we hit the deductible there?
I did not think we did.
I think we're still pulling the numbers together, and I think it's really close.
Okay.
If it's per building, may that, yeah.
Yeah, the, the golf course between the netting and some of that, I think, may get there.
Oh, sure.
I don't want to interrupt you. Can you speak to kind of our more recent experience and how we've been performing? I mean, as we talk about these issues.
Sure. So, so a lot of times, well, we're looking at the, the insurance companies are looking at the last five years' worth of history. And the number that had been paid the other day when I looked at it, I think was running at a 45% loss ratio, which is a perfectly profitable risk for the insurance marketplace subject to the, the winter storm we dealt with.
And one of the things we do at the shareholders' meeting is just kind of review our claims and the sources of those claims. And I think about the only thing we've identified in our, within our control, per se, is driver habits, and we've made progress on that.
Well, you and everybody else, we're spending a lot of time trying to dissuade distracted driving, right? So.
So any of the claims, for instance, like at my house, I have a few shingles blown off. I know I'm not going to hit my deductible. Do we even file a claim?
Well, like December 15th, we haven't. The, the staff is getting numbers together to try to figure out, okay, are we at the 1%? Just like you would at, at your house, have a conversation with the contractor, say, okay, what do you think my, my damage is, and we don't file a claim?
For us, it's a little bit more complicated than how many shingles blew off the roof, because we got to figure out staff time, you know, in terms of our emergency response and traffic-like damage and, and expenses incurred in terms of responding to the event.
But, but to your point, sir, if it's close to the deductible, then we're just trading dollars with the insurance company, and that's not in your best long-term interest. If it's a little over the deductible, it's usually my opinion that we don't turn it in and just, you know, keep the insurance company, keep the lost information nice and clean.
All right.
Other than for the liability aspect, do any large organizations our size do the equivalent of self-insuring? Use that term loosely.
You are kind of on the borderline of being large enough. You can always do it, but, you know, cities like Overland Park and Olathe and some of those, that usually 100,000 plus in population is kind of where it starts to make sense. We can go to, there are some companies that do a $50,000 self-insured retention instead of a deductible, and that, that can be okay, but then you have to get a third-party administrator, and that adds administrative costs, and it really doesn't solve any of the problems. I think liability program is working perfectly. The deductible's good. We have $150,000 aggregate stop loss. So all the claims rode that 150, so we know our worst-case scenario, which helps for budgeting purposes. I, it's a, it's a really, I think there's another city in the, not too far from here that Mark handles, has the same general structure. I think it's a really good program. Liability doesn't concern me other than, you know, law enforcement keeps me up at night, because we're not protected by the Torquay Claims Act in most cases. And so, you know, judgments can be out of control. Everything else, I think, is working great. It's really the struggles with property and cyber. That, that's my opinion, anyway.
And the law enforcement was adjusted last year, correct? It went to 750, I believe? If I remember right?
I don't recall the law enforcement.
I don't think there were any changes in that.
Okay. I thought there was. So you kind of touched on it before, but if we wanted to try to go to the market, what would you expect in terms of responses?
I would expect zero, other than possibly a pool. Employers mutual casualty would be the obvious choice. You're a little big for them, in my opinion. Now, they've, they've surprised me before. I'm sure you have a relationship with them, other than I do. But other than that, I just don't know of any markets.
I would echo what he said.
You've talked about this pooling. Do you carry similar coverage with Sling County?
Yes, we, we do.
Okay. If we were to try to pool, would that make sense to have one big policy for the whole
Well, as, as much as we'd like to thank you and the county would make a big policy in the insurance world, it's not a big policy. You know, we, we talk about property values. You have around 100 million. A big pool probably has 5 billion or more. That's why pooling is so popular in Texas. An average school district in Texas has an insured value of 1.5 billion for each school district. So it's easy to build, you know, it's the law of large numbers is what they're trying to do. And they're trying to separate, sometimes having another member that's to do, and they're trying to separate, sometimes having another member that's close by isn't good. You like to have it all separated so that one windstorm doesn't get too many properties.
I, I guess, I was just thinking if, could make that cooperation with the county one big policy here, but.
That, that's, I mean, I, I, that's a legal question, I mean, it'd be almost like unified government, you'd have a, you'd have some legal challenges with that.
And you, you stated that what they, they were saying, the increase in property values was 8%, is that what you were kind of saying, Mark?
That's where they wanted us to, to push our values, I believe I got that stopped last week, so.
What was our total premium last year? And did, how did we break that out? I can't remember, how much was property, how much was cyber?
Sure, the total premium was $514,000, of that, $250,000 was property premium.
Okay.
And our cyber premium had actually gone down and our premium last year was $10,700, but.
It's really pretty cheap.
It will not be there, they should.
I hope they didn't hear me say that, but I'm really.
They made it pretty clear last year that that was the end of the line, and we are implementing dual-factor authentication just because we had to, to even be eligible for.
Our other, we had three optional cyber quotes from the marketplace, they all exceeded $25,000.
Can you explain a little further what the cyber insurance covers and what it entails?
I'll start that, James, you might have to finish that. Anything that comes into the organization or goes out of the organization via computer, right? What we're seeing today are ransomwares. Some, some bad guy seizes control of your network system and holds it for ransom.
So that's the primary purpose of the insurance?
Right, right.
Including assistance to respond to the ransom attack.
Yes.
The cost of.
Negotiation, there was a school district out west, I remember the, the initial ransom was $600,000.
And in addition to that, it is a liability policy. Cyber has first-party liability and third-party liability, the third party would be our negligence, we did protect all the registrations for the swing pool or the municipal coat, right, municipal court records, and, and somebody's identity was stolen. We would have a breach coach and they would help us through, do all the notifications, all, all of that. So really, the value is in having that breach coach and that law firm that does this all the time.
So if a system gets wiped out or the data gets destroyed, this would cover rebuilding and all that?
We never say yes until we know the details of the claim. In theory, yeah, it's, it's really.
I'm just trying to figure out what it's, what it's.
Yeah, and, and that 10,000, quite honestly, if, if it comes in under 50, I'd be pretty happy. We're just full of good news this afternoon.
Yes, you are.
That's where I was.
It's not just you, we do this every day.
Well, that's actually where I was headed, to put you on this spot a little bit, what should we expect?
If, if we ended up bottom-line increase of $70,000, so from 5, 14, up 70, I'd consider that successful. Earlier, we were talking about the values, right? I've gotten them to stop pushing 8% across the board, at some point, I would rather buy higher values than higher rate, at least I'm, we're buying something.
Mm-hmm.
So that's, that's kind of a dance we're, we're doing with travelers right now.
And so then my next question's going, is, if that's the case, what do you suggest we do?
I'll jump in.
Okay.
So it is the 1st of May, I mean, we've got May and June is all we have. I would expect some firmer numbers to start coming in here in the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks. You know, if, if, if they're going to come in and it looks like it's going to be 650 or some number that we don't think is competitive, we'll regroup, and if, if we're directed to, to look at a pool option, we certainly can, they can flip a quote fairly quick. I don't like jumping at pools quickly, I think it's something that we want to be very methodical about, but there's, there's just no place to go. You know, I think in the meantime, Mark and his team can have a conversation with EMC just to confirm that, that they would not be interested in the account, but other than that, we just, to, to Mark's point, I was working on a city, and I think it was on one of his slides, for utilities, they want 17% increase in values, just in one year. And we just had appraisal done last year. So we had it to value and they want 17% more this year, just because the cost of copper, the fuel costs, supply chain, all the things that, you know, we all hear too much of.
So it sounds like you're saying travelers has a monopoly, essentially.
I will, I.
Just in our size.
Yeah, for this size, and I will, I will make sure it's crystal clear that Mark and his team are paid a fee, they're not paid a commission. So there's no advantage to him to, to having a higher premium. And I know that he, he wouldn't want to make a big deal out of that, but it is a big deal because I think it's always important that, that, that be transparent.
Well, I personally think we have to trust you guys, I mean, you do this for a living and I think you've always done us a, a good job, so we'll just keep an eye on it. I guess I'm not surprised at the increase based on property values, what we've seen going on in the country. I mean, this isn't, it shouldn't surprise anybody, so, so it's, maybe, hopefully, one of these days, we'll see some kind of relief, but, you know, we had it in health insurance, as you said, Mike, at one point, you know, health insurance was continually going up substantially, and really, our premiums, since I've been on the commission, have been fairly, our, our increases have been reasonable, it, it seems like, I mean, but, but things have changed a little bit here in the last year or two.
Well, we were coming off a 20-year soft market and that never happens, so there was a lot of catching up to do. One question I would have for you is, if you want Mark and his team to dust off that deductible buy-down option, I know last year, it didn't make sense to you, I think it could probably be an option if you want to think about it again, if not, that's, that's fine too, but I just want to make sure.
We have new commissioners, I think it'd be, be advantageous to at least look at that.
Okay.
And see where we're at.
So commissioners, I'm repeating myself, but would rather we have this conversation now and have a sense of where we're headed than show up literally the week that we have to authorize renewing insurance or we have no other options, that's an awful uncomfortable conversation to have. May not change the outcome, but at least we can have a little bit more informed conversation.
It is always our goal to have the renewal, or an options presented to you with at least one additional meeting before the renewal. In today's market, sometimes that's just not, that's just not possible. So, we'll do everything we can to make that happen, but because of, and it may be that we get all of it done except for cyber, and, and that has to be at the last meeting, but we'll, we'll work hard to, to get you the information as quickly as we can.
What is the renewal date?
July 1.
July 1.
Approximately, how many municipalities do you work with, just out of curiosity?
Um, I work with maybe 30 or so. Again, from Cameron County, which is in the southern tip in the Valley of Texas, up to some cities in South Dakota.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, this is, as Mark mentioned, this is not the first time I've had to have this conversation.
That's really all I intended to cover, unless you have additional questions.
Well, one thing, you know, all your clients share one thing in common, they all know that they can't go without some type of coverage. So some, right.
All right.
Right, thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Ready? Uh, we, this is a second amended.
Yeah.
And there's going to be a third.
Um, I think that should be the most current, but when, when we kick off the meeting, if you want to ask me to explain it, I'd be happy to do that.
All righty. Okay, well, see you at 4:00.
All right.
We do our best to estimate time, staff initially proposed 2:30, I pushed back to 3:00, maybe I should have pushed back to 3:15, but I have a hard time guesstimating.
This is good, I can go talk with Norman for a while then.
Are we still on?
Are we still on?
Salina City Commission Weekly Meeting. Ask the city clerk if the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
Thank you. May have roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck.
Here.
Commissioner Lenkowitz.
Here.
Commissioner Longbine.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Here.
Okay, that was a very short of not at all time delay. That's good. Commissioner Ryan is attending the meeting. I was going to say virtually, he's actually here, but remotely is probably the better word to use.
Thank you.
Thank you. All are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, free, and just for all.
I'm going to ask the city manager to explain some possible deviations or alterations in our schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a couple of, had need for a couple of amendments to the agenda. So you, there was an amended agenda distributed, and then there's an amended agenda at your seat. So I'll start by walking you through those. Item 6.2 on the agenda, you may recall from last week's conversation. That item was to make truck sales in the I-1 district conditional uses. And the ordinance that was attached to the staff report reflected it as a conditional use. But the heading of the staff report, and then subsequently the verbiage in the agenda initially indicated it as a permitted use. So the First Amendment was just to clarify that it's a conditional use rather than a permitted use to sync up with your action that you took last week. Then additionally, as kind of a last minute request, last week, as the packet was getting ready to go out the door, we received a request from a handful of developers asking that we consider special assessment financing on a 20-year term rather than a 15-year term. So items 6.5 and 6.6 both relate to special assessment financing. Staff had conversations on Friday and then again today with those applicants and confirmed that with their consent, we're removing them from today's agenda to give staff a sufficient time to staff through for you, the implications of a request for 20-year term versus 15. We can revise the staff report, and there's some additional analysis that we would prepare between now and then. So our target date to return those items to you is, is May 23rd. So the notation on the agenda that's on your desk is that they were removed with the consent of the applicant, rather than going through a full staff report only to tell you that they should, they needed to be postponed. And then lastly, Senator Clays is in attendance with us today, and he's, there's been a lot of discussion, a lot of activities relates to housing funding for Salina, and he has an update for you. My suggestion would be that if you were so inclined, you could amend the agenda to provide for an other business item to give him the opportunity to address you, possibly after awards and proclamations, and he could provide you that update. But that is, at your discretion.
Entertain a motion.
I would so move.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to amend their agenda to add an other business item after awards and proclamations. In favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries five, nothing. We will now move to awards and proclamations. It looks like we have, and that looks like, we do have several today. But it just shows you all the stuff that's going on, not just in the world, but here in Salina, opportunities to get involved or learn about something you didn't know much about. So we will start with national travel and, I'm sorry, I'm taking the city clerk's thunder. Excuse me.
Item 3.1, recognition of the Week of May 1 through 7, 2022 as National Travel and Tourism Week in the city of Salina. Sylvia Rice, Director of Visit Salina, will read the proclamation.
I'm just so excited to get you up here, isn't it?
That's right. I'm excited to be up here, Mayor and Commissioners. It is indeed National Travel and Tourism Week 2022, and I'm here to do the proclamation for this year. Whereas, the future of travel will be a consistent driver of Salina, Kansas's economy and workforce. And whereas, a robust travel industry provides significant economic benefits for the nation, generating more than $2.6 trillion in economic output prior to pandemic totals, with 1.2 trillion spent directly by travelers in the U.S. And whereas, travel has been the foundation of a healthy workforce, serving as one of the largest private sector employers in the U.S., supporting 17 million jobs prior to the pandemic. Whereas, spending by travelers is aided state and local governments alike, generating $90 billion in state and local tax revenue, essential services and programs. And whereas, Salina is rebounding in visitation, with hotel room revenue nearly at 2019 levels after the drastic decline of 2020. And whereas, venues and events in Salina are again providing full programming to growing audiences. And whereas, people are ready to go. And Salina has an exciting experience to share, whether they're here on business, for family time, to attend a convention, enjoy a sports event, concert theater, or simply have a much-needed respite. And whereas, the travel industry cannot recover without the full return of in-person meetings and events by both domestic and international visitors. And whereas, the rebound of travel will drive the rebuilding of the U.S. economy and American workforce, since prior to the pandemic, 60% of leisure and hospitality employment was small business. And whereas, the future of travel will prioritize diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives, powering a future that values all cultures, embraces new perspectives, and reflects the faces and ideas of the full American society. And whereas, the future of travel will foster a faster recovery, create a more sustainable, seamless, and secure travel experience, and help to rebuild Salina, Kansas's workforce, driving us toward a more prosperous future. Therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, M.D., Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 1 through 7, 2022, as National Travel and Tourism Week in Salina, Kansas, and urge its citizens to join me in recognizing the critical role this industry plays in our community dated the second day of May 2022.
Thank you. I guess one thing we don't want everyone in this room is to just get up and leave town and travel someplace else, so.
Only if they promise to come back and bring friends.
Right. We have some events coming up.
We do have some events. It's a busy week in Salina, Kansas, and a lot of it is visitor-related, and so it's a, it's a happy coincidence that we're able to use some of these events to show all of the things that visitors can experience in Salina. This week, we do have First Friday events, Thursday at the museum, and then Friday, we will christen the new stage in what I refer to as 67401 Plaza. I'm not sure if that's the correct name or not, but it's the one that I'm using currently, at least. That's going to happen on Friday night, May 6. After that, there is a concert at the Stiefel Air Supply. For those of you that are about my age, you will, you will be excited about that. of you that are about my age, you will, you will be excited about that. Then on Saturday, May the 7th, we have the Unwrapped Event for Sculpture Tour 2022. We're excited. It's our 12th year. We have 22 sculptures. They have all been, nearly all been wrapped, twice. Thank you to Salina Downtown for that. And we're very excited. We have new artists and returning artists this year. I think we broke a record this year in that Commissioner Hoppick told me today, we only have four sculptures yet to install. And in years past, it's been a mad dash on Friday, so we're excited about that. The unwrapped party starts at 11:00 on Saturday morning where we will simultaneously unwrap the 22 pieces. People can begin to enjoy the exhibit, pick up their brochure ballot, vote for their favorite if they wish. We can do the people's choice voting through the end of 2022. And then at 1:00, we'll have jurors, merit awards given at the stage. We will have a handful of the artists with us this year, so that'll be exciting. Following the unwrapped party, Salina Downtown is going to be hosting their Spring Spritzer again at 67401 Plaza, and that's going to take place until 5:00 p.m. On Saturday night, actually during the day Saturday, the Muscle Cars exhibit opens at the garage. I've seen previews. It's going to be a very, very cool exhibit. Everybody needs to make sure that they take time to go check that out while it's on display. And then Saturday night, we, the Visit Salina crew and the Chamber Crew is going to be the game sponsor for the Liberty Game to also celebrate Tourism Week. So we're going to round off the, the week with that. So we ask y'all to join us for all of those things.
Well, you know, and I think other than the price of the football game ticket, I think just about everything you just mentioned is fairly free or free.
Many, many of them are.
Many of them.
The Stiefel tickets would be.
Except for the, yeah, Stiefel tickets aren't free, right.
And the very reasonable Liberty tickets, yes.
The stage christening, what time is that?
That is at 5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.
Yep. A live, live musical entertainment.
There is going to be music.
Mm-hmm. Also during the downtown event. Am I saying all the things you're going to say?
No, I have more to add.
Okay.
If you have more to add, come on up.
Well, she's got her own proclamation.
She's got her own, yeah. Yes, you do. I'm just so used to seeing her everywhere. The Kansas County Commissioner Association had their meeting here last week and I got to greet them. And they had a welcome reception at the garage and people just kept coming up to me and said, wow, this is really great. We had no idea. You all really did it great. And downtown, a lot of those commissioners have been here before. So we're hoping they will go tell their, their friends.
That's exactly the point. We've had really, really wonderful responses from folks that are coming back to Salina and that are coming for the first time. The county commission event was a big one. Joanne was heavily involved in that. We had them downtown for the full day. Joanne's very good at that spousal event situation. She makes sure they have a good time at Shell, so make sure they have plenty of time to stop at the merchants and part with some of their hard-earned dollars.
Right. Thank you, Brett. Come on up front here. I'll give you a signed proclamation. All right, let's go to 3.2.
Item 3.2, recognition of the month of May 2022 as Mental Health Month in the city of Salina. Julie Clayson, CBS Coordinator for Central Kansas Mental Health Center, will read the proclamation.
Ms. Clayson, hi.
Hello. Thank you, guys, for having us today. Whereas the mental health of every citizen is essential to the emotional and economic prosperity of our families, communities, and businesses in the city of Salina. And whereas, mental health is a key component of every individual's overall physical health and emotional well-being. And whereas, mental illness affects people of all ages, race, ethnicities, and income levels in the city of Salina. And whereas, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for Kansans aged 10 to 34. And whereas, mental health conditions are not only common, but they are treatable, and early and effective intervention can save lives. And whereas, we recognize the impact of the pandemic on our collective mental health, with 1 in 3 adults reporting depression or anxiety. And whereas, untreated mental health illness leads to higher rates of emergency department visits, hospitalizations, school dropouts, unemployment, and suicides. And whereas, communities should strive to support mental wellness by increasing access to treatment, educating ourselves and our communities about mental wellness, mental illness, and supporting our citizens as they seek to improve their mental health. And whereas, greater public awareness about mental health can positively transform attitudes about and towards people with mental illness, making it easier for our citizens to seek help for a mental health issue.
How do you get folks to make that first step?
Trust. Trust. We dedicate, we do a lot of teaching in regards to our employees that we have right now that are working for us. And it is all about trust, openness, willingness to meet where they're, where they're at. We have providers that are in our schools right now. We have providers that are going to the Mission, Grace, and then several other places. You might even see them on the street speaking to somebody who is in the middle of a mental health challenge and trying to support them to get to a mental health support. We have an ACT program that is working exclusively on those who are in the highest of needs, maybe supporting them with reaching out to get into the medical, into a bed at a hospitalization if needed, as well as using the supports that we have at the Mental Health Center for them to use.
Are you working much with the jail population?
We do, yes. We do have a program and we're, I believe, actively hiring for someone right now to help with that, as well as helping those who are looking for jobs. So when they're coming out, being able, we actually are looking to hire someone to support with that in going through the process of being hired. And so we've got that on the bounce as well. We've actually got somebody who's looking at that position. Hopefully, we'll know a little bit more about that soon. Trying to think of some of the things we've got going on. But those are some of our biggest that are going on at this point.
Great. And so if someone's having a crisis, is there a particular place they should start?
You know, we have an access team. And the access team meets, you can go in at any time during Monday through Friday, 12:00, 1:00 to 3:00. And so they can come in and see anyone at any time. Sorry, this is in my face. Anyone at any time. And so you would go in and meet with one of our navigators. You would schedule with them, go through a process. It takes about two hours to go through that process. And I will say that that is a barrier for some patients coming in. It feels like a really long amount of time, but really, we're working towards being more whole health. And so not only are they checking in on the mental health, but they're also checking on a medical health and making sure that we have providers for them, not only just for the mental health side, but also getting them with a doctor, a dentist, all those other things as well.
And where is that physically located?
Thank you. L O, 809. You're asking a lot of questions. 809 Elmhurst is where it's located at. Also, if, as, like I said, we run Monday through Friday, we are open to the public. But also, we have staff that go into the emergency room. So if someone was in the middle of a mental health crisis, they could take that person to the, to the, our emergency room here in Salina, and they could be screened there to see what supports we could give them. Again, the emergency room sometimes takes between four to six hours to be able to go through that full process. But I'll tell you that those who have used that support, were able to get into a bed, get some medications figured out, and get stabilized, and then back into the community with us using those supports, they've been very successful.
All right, thank you.
I have a.
Sure.
Enough question for you.
Bring it on.
How does a person overcome the financial barriers to seek and get help?
Absolutely. So I am actually, I'm on the child side, so community-based services is children. And so we have, we have something called the SED waiver. And the SED waiver is a way to beat that barrier, if you will. So kiddos who meet the criteria for, we have some assessments, things like that, they come in to do an intake with one of our therapists. If they meet the criteria for an SED waiver, then they are given a medical card through the state of Kansas. And so all of their treatment from there on will be taken care of through the state of Kansas through that medical card. That includes case management, therapy, any services that we provide, as well as medical services. On the adult side of it, we actually have a pay scale. So if they were to come in, we could look at that, what their income is, and then they would be able to pay off that pay scale. Does that kind of give you an answer to what you were looking for?
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking for is how do you convince a person who knows they probably can't afford the services to seek help?
Well, what I just did with you is what I would do with that person. So we would sit down and we would talk about what that looks like. We actually, Gretchen and I, who's sitting over here, we are mental health first aiders. And so we will be, we are giving trainings on what to do if you're in, faced with someone who is going through a mental health challenge. And so what we teach during that course is to be able to have those conversations and to help them seek that mental health support. And so we are doing a lot of that as well, to try to give a person on the street who maybe is unsure of what to do, give them that knowledge so that they can then help find that. We give providers as well when we're there. We give an assortment of mental health supports that way. And like I said before, it really is about getting to know the person and getting on their level and being able to have that conversation and letting them know that hope is out there, that there is a way to get through this. There are means to get that support, even if you don't have the financial ability, that we will find a way to do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Any other questions?
Come on, and we'll have a picture taken.
Sure.
And get your signed proclamation. 3.3.
Item 3, excuse me, 3.3, recognition of the month of May 2022 as Bike Month in the city of Salina. Michelle Griffin, Director of Mobility Management at North Central Kansas Coordinated Transit District, will read the proclamation.
Well, you're here just one week too late.
Wait, we are right on time, maybe. We'll pretend like we're right on time.
Right.
All right. So whereas, the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Salina's scenic beauty. And whereas, throughout the month of May, the residents of Salina and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas, creating a bicycling-friendly community has shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy of Salina, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. And whereas, the North Central Kansas Coordinated Transit District, OCCK, the Kansas Mobility Managers, CAN Cycle, the League of American Bicyclists, schools, parks, recreation departments, police departments, agencies, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2022. And whereas, these groups are also promoting bicycle tourism year-round to attract more visitors who enjoy local restaurants, hotels, retail establishments, and cultural and scenic attractions. And whereas, these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. So now therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, M.D., Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Bike Month in the city of Salina, and I urge all residents to join me in this special observance.
So you have a day when everyone's going to park their cars and ride bikes?
Well, that would be a great goal. So we do have a few things going on in May. So yesterday, May 1st, was National Ride a Bike Day. So hopefully, you enjoyed the nice weather outside and hopped on your bike, took it around town. We just announced that Ad Astra, our local coffee house, is supporting bicycle riding by offering a 10% purchase. So if you ride your bike down to the shop, they'll automatically give you 10% off. That just started May 1st. And then for our CAN Cycle program, which is our bike sharing, so we have five racks here in Salina, 25 bikes, you can use the promo code BIKEFORLIFE for free CAN Cycle rides all month. And then May 4th is National Bike to School Day. So if you have kiddos, you can encourage them to take a safe route on their bike to school. And then we are hoping on May 20th that everyone bikes to work, because that is National Bike to Work Day, and we are planning some events with that.
Wow, that, we'll have to advertise that.
Yeah.
Are you getting any feedback of any areas in town that are, remain particularly difficult for cyclists? I mean, that, from our planning.
Right.
Perspective, we need to maybe move up our, on our list?
That is not a question that I would have an answer to, but we do work with the Bike Committee through the city, so we could address that at a meeting.
Please. And similarly, places where we don't have enough bike racks?
Sure. Yep.
Thank you. So May 20th.
Yes.
That's not a commission meeting day, is it?
That's a Friday. That's a Friday.
Friday?
Friday. Hopefully, it won't be windy that day.
I think I'm going to do that.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. Come on up front and give you a proclamation. And 3.4.
Item 3.4, recognition of the week of May 2 through 7, 2022 as Small Business Appreciation Week in the city of Salina. Leslie Bishop, Executive Director of Salina Downtown, Inc., will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for letting me be here today. Small Business Appreciation, Appreciation Week. Whereas, the government of Salina, Kansas, celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States. And whereas, small businesses employ 61.2 million people in the United States. And whereas, 94% of consumers in the United States value the contributions small businesses make in their community. And whereas, 91% of consumers shop small due to the personalization and customization components. And whereas, shopping small helps keep our small businesses healthy, and that keeps our economy strong. And whereas, supporting local businesses not only helps pay their employees, but those employees spend their money at other local businesses. That means by buying local, you help create jobs for your friends and neighbors, contribute to improve public infrastructure, and invest in your community both socially and economically. And whereas, behind every small business is a local family. Now therefore, I, Trent W. Davis, M.D., Mayor of Salina, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 2nd through the 7th, 2022 as Small Business Appreciation Week, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Appreciation Week and throughout the year. And we are really excited to be helping our small businesses this week by offering a gift card promotion, sponsored in part by our office and First Bank Kansas, Advantage Trust Company, Jabbit PC, and Bennington State Bank, excuse me, Bank of Tuskegee. And we are offering $25 gift, gift cards for only $20. And I'm happy to say that just today, it was the first time it was live, we sold 67. And we are concluding this wonderful week of small business appreciation by the wonderful events that Sylvia Rice mentioned by our Spring Spritzer that will be held after the Sculpture Unwrapped Party, beginning at 2:00 at the new stage at Ash and Santa Fe. Tamara Howe, School of Dance, will perform from 2:00 to 2:45. Following that, Shannon Stars will bring Steve Howard from the Cozy Inn. I say twirl him over, but that would look strange. So they're parading him over by twirling and recognizing his birthday of 100 years. And then following that, Sunset Centers will perform from 3:00 to 5:00. And we will be selling alcoholic spirits and non-alcoholic spirits. And we incur, and we have face painting for the kids, Color Me Crazy Face Painting, and Food Truck, Food by Bonnie. So we have a lot happening this weekend in downtown Salina, and we appreciate all the support that our community gives our merchants downtown.
That sounds like fun. I'm assuming there's wristbands for the.
Wristbands that will recognize 21 and over, wristbands that will recognize children who are not 21. And no coolers will be allowed in. And I am proud to say, four of our board members will be there to act as bouncers.
Really? Are you in a position to talk about the, is it, down, Salina Stars, the program?
We've. We've been helping the Chamber of Commerce promote that to our downtown businesses, and I believe at this point, we have 10 that have signed up. And when I talked with Renee Duxler last week, I believe they're almost close to 20, and they wanted 20 businesses to have that project go live, but it may have grown since then. But we have, you know, restaurants, professional services, clothing stores, hair salons, they could all participate in the Saline County Stars, but we're helping the Chamber just by talking to our downtown merchants.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Sounds like Saturday is the...
Friday and Saturday. Party at the stage on Friday, and then unwrap, and then Spring Spritzer. And it's all free, except for the beer and hard seltzer.
Fair enough. All right.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move to our other, special other business if things are arranged.
Correct. By way of your amendment, you're set up for that. Not necessarily a proclamation, more of an announcement, but I'll turn it over to Senator Clays.
I'm sorry, I, that, the pillar was right in front of you. I kept looking around, nowhere.
Kinda hiding back there.
I kept looking up on the, on the board to see you there. Welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, members of the Commission. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today. I'm State Senator J.R. Clays, and I was reminded by Facebook this morning that I've been serving in the Kansas Legislature for 10 years, so it has been an honor to serve you in Topeka for the last decade. As you are keenly aware, there's been a concerted community effort to address the housing shortage issue in Salina. In fact, I went on Realtor.com before I went over here today. And if you get rid of all the pending listings, there are 48 single-family homes available for purchase right now, heading into the summer. Just not enough to address the number of jobs that we have on the horizon here in our community, and something just simply must be done, and I appreciate that you all have been such a huge part of that. Employers want to expand, they want to hire here, and people want to live, work, and raise a family here. And we have, we do not have the housing to accommodate the kind of job growth that is coming our way. The plan that was put forward and supported by the city, the Chamber, the Economic Development Organization, several employers, among others, I'm gonna forget people, so I'm not gonna list everyone, was submitted to the Spark Task Force for federal ARPA funds. We were seeking a large amount of money to supplement the amount that was being invested by the community, by tax abatements, by the developer themselves, and then some, some funds that were coming in from employers as well. As you know, it's very difficult to make major projects pencil. They, it is hard to have profitability when it comes to major housing developments, and the speed at which we need these houses is, it's unprecedented, I think, for Salina. I serve on the Economic Development Panel on that Spark Task Force, so I've been participating in those meetings as we've been going through and looking at all the projects that are available, including the one in Salina. We, we received 1 point, we narrowed it down to 1.2 billion dollars in projects chasing about $440 million. Initially, there were about $9 billion in projects that were chasing these funds, so very few were going to be selected. It was very obvious. But I also serve on the Budget Conference Committee, and as we were preparing the state budget, those funds that were available through ARPA began being divided up amongst some projects, but also amongst our, our Regents Universities, community colleges, technical schools, all places that you'd wanna see those funds expended. But, but it became evident that these funds that were available, initially it was 1.8 billion, much of that went to the Department of Labor for unemployment. As we started getting down to the amounts that were going to projects, it, it became very obvious that our project was going to have a tough time being funded through that Spark process. Just too many projects, good projects, chasing too few dollars. In serving on that committee, a project was put in in southwest Kansas, and once I saw that one was going in, it was, it was an opportunity to put ours in there, too. So initially, we had a portion of our project put in and signed by the governor, and now we have the other portion that's going in, and will be up for signature here shortly, within the next few days. I'm definitely honored to be the person who's standing before you to announce this today, but I can't emphasize enough how proud I am of the way our community came together on this, whether it was the city or the, the Economic Development Organization, our friends at the Chamber, everyone who came, came together behind this. I'm gonna, again, leave someone out, so I won't list everybody. But I am here today to announce that the city of Salina, through our state budget, barring a line item veto, again, will be the recipients of $25 million towards what has been commonly referred to as the Driver Project. And I'm happy to stand for any questions on this, if you'd like.
I'm just happy that the state year starts July 1st.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So the, the budget, they have, the governor has 10 days from the day that it's enrolled, so it should be 10 days from today that we'll know that that, the entirety of the money is available, and then the Department of Commerce will be responsible for dispersing that to the city.
Well, I was not part of the delegation that traveled to Topeka. I've heard about it, and you have no idea of the man-hours, probably frustration, worry, energy that went into meeting all the folks you have to meet to line something like this up. And it really helps to have someone in a position to know where to line things up, and we certainly appreciate you for, for your, for your guidance and leadership in that regard.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry it had to be at the 11th hour, but that's sometimes when the things get done.
Most of us are still awake at the 11th hour. No problem at all. Are there any questions for the Senator?
Just a big, great, big thank you. Appreciate the, the leadership in Topeka and being able to do that for us.
Yes, Senator Clays, when that, funds are dispersed, where were they end up? Wherever they go?
So it's designed as a grant program, so the grant, I believe, would be issued to the city for it to disperse to the developers.
And the city will disperse as needed.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ryan, did you have any questions or comments?
No questions, but just thank you very much for your work, your diligence on this. I know that it took a lot of, a lot of effort from a lot of different concerns, so I appreciate your, your guidance.
Thank you.
I want to acknowledge Senator Clays was instrumental. Lauren Driscoll and Amanda Barnett and our staff have put in countless hours, nights, weekends, evenings, you name it, trying to respond and adapt and, and assist Senator Clays and our elected delegation to try to put forward, our best foot forward, and she's done a terrific job. So, didn't, it truly was the 11th hour, didn't know how this was gonna play out, but a lot of effort paid off, and we're certainly looking forward to getting started on addressing the housing need.
We'll make sure that we reserve a shovel for you.
Yeah, thank you.
When, when the dirt does finally...
Well, like I said, there are several people smarter than I who put this thing together, and I'm just glad I, I got an opportunity to play a small role in this for our community. But like Mike said, there's, there's a lot of folks who are involved in this, and they came up to Topeka at a moment's notice to meet with folks. Several of our employers were also involved here in town, major employers who were willing to come up and, and discuss this project, and they did a tremendous job. Just couldn't be prouder of our community coming together on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much for coming. We will, boy, shame we can't quit right there, huh? But we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 5.1, approve the minutes of April 25, 2022. Item 5.2, award the bid for project number 22018B, 2022 Minor Concrete Pavement Repair 2, for $110,727.50 with a 5% construction contingency, for a total project authorization not to exceed $116,263.88, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Lancaster Construction, Inc. of Salina upon fulfillment of all prerequisites under the bid documents.
Are there any items the Commissioner would like to withdraw from the consent agenda? Oh, enter the motion to approve.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve the consent agenda items 5.1 and 5.2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0, and we will move on to Administration 6.1.
Item 6.1, approve ordinance number 22-11110 on second reading, amending ordinance number 96-9738, which established the development standards and limitations in the Cedar Creek Manufactured Home Park.
This ordinance was passed on first reading last Monday, April 25th. We've had no comments received, and I don't believe this represents any changes...
Correct.
...from before. Right. Any questions, comments from the Commission? All right. Any questions, comments from the public?
I thought I was gonna mention something about the trailer parks later on, but I'll just do it now. John Blanchard, City of Salina. First of all, that's great news from Senator Clays. I think it was, it's good to have that bit of good news with the good news that we, it looks like we've got about 300 trailer homes coming into the community, according to news reports and so on. This obviously is an ordinance that helps to support some of that. So, I just wanna speak in favor of this. I think it's long overdue that we've done something about trailer, some of these trailer parks, because it used to be between 1975 and around 95, it was, that was what affordable housing was. And I think, I wanna recognize Lauren Driscoll, because I know that the North 13th Park in particular was a focus that she had, and just recognize the work that she did, because that's a huge turnaround. So, just, just to leave, though, with a question, and, and that is, is regarding the announcement by Senator Clays and the addition of all these numerous housing units by way of mobile homes. I'm not sure that the mobile home component was reflected in the housing study, but will that housing study be updated to reflect some of those numbers as well? And thank you.
And I can answer that. We, we've actually asked our consultant, RDG, to keep a running update of housing products that have been built, authorized and built relative to kind of those categories and numbers that were identified, so we can keep a running tally of price points in housing products relative to the housing study. So, I think we're doing that every six months, but don't quote me on that. But it...
And I guess, as I learned last week, we'll have to all update our vocabularies now to manufactured homes, but just when you think you, you know a little bit about something, terminology changes. Commissioner Ryan, did you have any comments?
I have none.
All right, thank you. Entertain a motion for any action on 6.1.
Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 22-11110 on second reading.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11110. May we have roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. Motion carries 5 to nothing, and we will move to...
Before we move on, I would like to follow up to Mr. Blanchard's comments. I did drive through the North 13th Street Trailer Park and would like to give, I believe it's Mr. Danny Huel that's doing that, that has been paved and cleaned out, and, and new trailers are being moved in there, and it is a tremendous benefit to that area, and so he needs to be thanked for, for his work on that. So, excited to see that change, because if you'd been there before, you would definitely recognize the difference, so.
Maybe we'll get some before and after pictures, just...
I don't have any of the before, but I have them in my mind.
Code enforcement might have some before pictures.
What's that?
Code enforcement might have some.
Yeah, they may. Yeah, it would be good to see.
All right. Thank you. 6.2.
Item 6.2, approve ordinance number 22-11111 on second reading, amending section 42-237 of the I-1 district regulations to add truck sales and service to the list of conditional uses in the I-1 district.
Okay, and this ordinance was also passed on first reading on April 25th. We do have the corrected version that we're using here, which led us to the list of conditional uses, not permitted uses. Any other changes or additional...
No, that's the one thing that I wanted to note. The, your, your action last week was to make it a conditional use. The ordinance was drafted as a conditional use, but there were a couple of incorrect references to permitted use, so.
All right. Any questions, comments, and Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I'm good.
Any questions, comments from the public? Right, back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Davis, I move we approve ordinance number 22-11111 on second reading.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 22-11111. It's a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hopick?
Aye.
Commissioner Lenkowitz?
Aye.
Commissioner Longbine?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye. The motion carries 5 to nothing, and we will move to 6.3.
Item 6.3, approve charter ordinance number 41, exempting the city of Salina from the provisions of KSA 13-1024A in providing for substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for set improvements and repealing Charter Ordinance Number 39.
This back.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Debbie Pack, Director of Finance and Administration. Back in July of 2019, the City Commission approved Resolution Number 19-7722, expressing their support for the baseball softball project presented by Salina Athletic Partners. And during that conversation, the, the share of, the city's share of that project was anticipated to be about $4 million. City Commission, during budget discussions of 2022, decided that about $2.5 million of that would be bonded and, and supported by transient guest tax, and the other $1.5 million would be supported by cash. Per our current charter ordinance, projects in the public parks, improvements in public parks, is limited to $1 million of issuance of bonds per year. So in, on April 25th, 2020, staff presented a charter ordinance 41, which removed the limits of all of the categories that were in the original ordinance number 39. City Commission did not pass that charter ordinance by the required 2/3rds majority vote on first reading, and instructed staff to return with a revised charter ordinance, leaving the categories in, except adding an additional category for this particular project. So what we're presenting today is ordinance, or Charter Ordinance 41, which keeps Charter Ordinance 39's categories as they were originally in Ordinance 39, and adds category I for baseball softball facility improvements, including the reconstruction improvements and repair of city-owned baseball and softball facilities as intended in the public-private partnership agreement with Salina Athletic Partners. And number 5, which is the maximum of $4 million under project category I. As this is a charter ordinance, this does require a 2/3rds majority vote, a first and a second reading of the ordinance. It also must be published for two consecutive weeks, and it has a 60-day period of where it could be...
Protested.
Protested, thank you. Couldn't get that out of my mind, just like any other ordinance. Another note to this ordinance is during the review of Charter Ordinance 39, it was discovered that the category descriptions for project categories E and F were identical. So we took, we took this opportunity in, in Charter Ordinance 41 to correct that, to state that the stormwater drainage system category E was actually for stormwater drainage systems. There is no direct fiscal impact associated with this item. So staff has identified the following options for City Commission's consideration, which is to approve on first reading Charter Ordinance 41, to approve on first reading with amendments as you... amendments as you deem appropriate, postpone consideration of charter ordinance forty-one and provide us with direction as to what additional information you might need, approve charter ordinance forty-one on first reading and also direct us if you need further information for consideration at the time of the second reading, or take no action and provide staff with additional direction for financing this baseball project. I would stand for questions if you have any.
Start. Commissioner Hoppick? Thank you. Nonetheless, Commissioner Ryan?
I have none.
I have none. Any comments, questions from the public?
John Blanchard, City of Salina. Wow, no questions at all on a charter ordinance. That is amazing. I want to just mention a few things. One is that you were told in the last two meetings that there are four steps that you can provide input on, that you can stop these projects at any time. We all know that after step one is done, that project's going forward. I'm not aware of any projects that haven't moved forward. Second thing is that, Mayor Davis, you asked on two different meetings whether or not any of these have been petitioned. And the answer is, is that yes, charter ordinance thirty-nine did have a petition filed. That petition did not go through because one of the people passing around the petition did not put his address on the petitions that he collected, so they failed to meet the number of petitioners done. Now, I'm not saying anything negative towards the city attorney, but you were in error and you were also in error that none of these had ever had a petition filed against them. You had mentioned at the second meeting, it was about the bicentennial center and that one did not have a petition filed against it. However, I will say this, it's not your responsibility to let these folks know whether or not a charter ordinance has been petitioned. Mayor Davis, you and Commissioner Ryan were both on the city commission in April of twenty sixteen when that happened. So I don't think that you need to rely on staff as much as, we would hope that the two of you at least would rely on your institutional knowledge and experience, but the rest of you, when you don't ask any questions, you just go along with whatever the answer is, sometimes I think you need to be a little more deliberate. Charter ordinance number thirty-eight passed with a four point five million, raised the debt issuance from four point, from one to four point five, and thirty-nine raised it from four point five to seven. And that's just in the newspapers and everything else. I would like to say as far as this ordinance goes, I do support the two point six, because you committed to the baseball folks, four million, but you've already given them some money. And if all you need is two point six, I would hope that some of you would ask the question of, why are we asking for four if we're only committed to six, or two point six? So I hope that you would ask some of those questions as to why, why are we asking for more specific, you know, directly and specifically? But I'd just like to end this portion of it by commending both the mayor and Commissioner Longbine for once again, standing up for citizens and the right for citizens to be heard. And I appreciate both of you for that and I hope that in the future, the other three will take more into consideration the fact that the voice of the people is important. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Chad Farber, Salina. I had the exact same question that Mr. Blanchard just brought up. If we only need two point five, two point six, why are we going forward to four million on this charter ordinance? And I, I understand having contingencies, but a sixty percent contingency seems a bit drastic. So if you could answer that, and, and I'd like to echo the same thing, I thank you guys for standing up for the citizens of Salina last week in, in the vote for the, I guess, the original repeal of this charter ordinance. But is, is there any kind of reason for the extra, the four million as opposed to the two point six that, that is there?
I could give you an answer. I'm, I'm going to defer to the C-Manager, because his answer will probably be a little more coherent. We have, I asked him the same question.
Not to be overly direct, but we were asked to have a number higher than the debt issuance amount. We didn't, last week you didn't specifically talk about a number, and if you want to amend that number, you're certainly welcome to do that, to hit the number on the nose or have some smaller amount.
Right. This would be the maximum, this does not obligate us to spend that much money.
Correct, but that would eliminate the fact to come back before the people. If we had a project in the two and a half to four million dollar range, with this charter ordinance thirty-nine being gone and the new category being added, you guys as commission or whoever the new commission is, a project up to four million, you would not have to come back before, the people are off for a protest period, like miss, like they were talking about just a moment ago.
The, the project category is very specific in, in that it says baseball softball facility improvements, reconstruction improvements and repair of city-owned baseball softball facilities as intended in the public-private partnership agreement with Salina Athletic Partners. So it's, it's dialed in pretty tightly, but the, you could, you could choose as a governing body to amend that, that four million number to whatever you'd like it to be.
And I, and I think that's where we were going last week when we addressed this board and I guess the week before as well. There needs to be more public input as opposed to, as opposed to board discretion of these funds. And I couldn't help but notice that, that is the moment that didn't go through last week, that, that Commissioner Hoppick was directing, you know, well, we don't want, just want it for this amount, we need to go up and above. So, so I was wondering, is there another project on the horizon that you're trying to get that amount for, as opposed to just a two, two and a half or two point six or whatever it is for this particular project? Is that the reason for raising it to four million, or is it something that the commission can say, let's put it at three million or two point seven, five or whatever it is, so that we can keep the power back in the hands of the people?
Well, I think from personal experience, one, costs are going up, so we may have to factor that in, you know, for what was originally a two point five million dollar project, it may now be three or three point two. And we may realize that there are some alternates that we really wanted, but had cut for budgetary reasons that, you know, with proper discussion, we may decide, but gosh, this would be a golden opportunity, perhaps our only opportunity to, to put them in.
Sure.
It, it does give some wiggle room.
And I understand contingencies. Again, the costs are high, it just seemed like a, a very large contingency of one and a half or one point four million in there. But thank you, I'll let you guys.
Yeah, we, we don't mind spending less at all.
I would appreciate spending less as well.
Commissioner Hoppick, did you have? Any other comments? And no comments online. Commissioner Ryan?
No comments.
All right.
Actually, I would like to add just one thing. It's probably worth, it's been stated before, but it's worth stating again. The environment we have right now in terms of the cost of operating, supplies, labor, et cetera, is ever increasing and I can tell you, just as a small business owner, the longer I wait to do a project, the more I spend. So when there's, there's lag time, you're paying on the back end of it. And I, I think, just from my perspective, allocating a little bit of extra money or a lot of extra money creates a situation where maybe there's not as much deliberation and decisions can get made quicker and thus you're spending less money. I mean, if you're talking, again, and it's an environment that's incredibly different than what we're used to in the last couple decades.
Well, I agree with the comments that, I guess I didn't really put that in perspective, but why do we need, why can't we just reduce this by a million bucks? That's not a little bit of money. That's not a little overage.
Well, and I think also, you know, because this talks about the baseball softball, and I know we have done some drainage work out at Bill Burke. I believe there's still some drainage work to look at at East Crawford. I'm not sure if some of those things would be looked at while we're doing this. So there were some, there were some other things on that checklist, so I have no trouble with the, with the four million and if there's a little something extra we have to do to make some of those other facilities more usable.
Well, I, I think what is in place in the original proposal, we need to stay with that. We don't need to keep adding to it. It's a lot of money to spend on baseball fields.
Again, we're paying for a majority of this through transient guest tax. We're, so we're looking to transient guest tax, which are dollars that come from outside of the community to, to help pay for that. That's the reason we increase the.
It's still tax dollars.
Any consolation? This list is a whittled down version of the original.
Yeah.
The original list, which I don't have in front of me right now, but we, we did let some things go. Right. Any action to be taken?
Mayor Davis, I move we approve on first reading charter ordinance number forty-one, exempting the city of Salina from the provision of KSA thirteen dash one, oh, two, four, A, and providing for substitute and additional provisions on the same subject relating to general improvements and the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying for said improvements and repealing charter ordinance number thirty-nine.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading charter ordinance number forty-one. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries four to one. All right. Item six point four.
Item six point four, authorize the purchase and installation of a replacement gas boiler and associated controls for the city of Salina Police and Municipal Court Facilities.
Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Commissioner, Mayor Davidson, Commissioners, Jeff Hammond, Director of Parks and Recreation. In August of two thousand nineteen, August twenty-ninth of two thousand nineteen, to be exact, the city commission authorized via resolution nineteen dash seven, seven, three, six, to execute an agreement with Train of Kansas to design and engineer a boiler replacement for the Salina Police Department facility. The police department boiler was installed in, the existing boiler was installed in nineteen sixty-seven and is currently fifty-five years old this year. The boiler is the primary source of heat for the Salina Police Facility. The boiler has exceeded its life expectancy and is in need of replacement. The police department facility is a twenty-four hour staffed facility and houses emergency communications and operations. The proposed two-stage replacement boiler and updated automation systems would replace the aging boiler, increase efficiency and ensure consistent uninterrupted operations for that facility. As stated earlier, the agreement with Train of Kansas was approved in nineteen, two thousand nineteen, which assisted the city in providing design for a difficult and complicated boiler replacement, assessing electrical demands and plumbing requirements, as well as the related automation controls for the police station and the municipal court. As part, as part of that agreement, Train of Kansas would utilize the U.S. Communities, or now known as Omni Partners Cooperative Purchasing Program, to purchase the mechanical equipment. Additionally, with this agreement, Train of Kansas provided competitive bidding services for a mechanical contractor to install that boiler and related equipment. Train of Kansas contacted several mechanical contractors to provide installation services for the replacement boiler and advertised the need for such services in the Salina Journal on November eighteenth of two thousand nineteen. Additionally, additionally, Train of Kansas held an onsite conference at the police facility for interested bidders on November twenty-second of two thousand nineteen. The competitive bidding process for mechanical contractors resulted in two bids. The successful low bidder, or the low bidder was P-one Group from Wichita, Kansas. As a result of the pandemic, this project was put on hold through twenty twenty. During that year, staff submitted a capital request for an automation system for the municipal court facility, which was approved for twenty-one at twenty-one thousand dollars. These funds remain in the building and facilities capital reserve fund balance, and this project did not get completed in two thousand twenty-one. In two thousand twenty-one, staff submitted the boiler replacement and automation system for the police facility for the two thousand twenty-two capital improvement plan. The approved funding for that boiler replacement is a hundred and fifty-five thousand and the police department automation system is thirty-five thousand. Recently, Train of Kansas updated the total proposed project cost with input from the P-one Group, which is the mechanical contractor, at a cost of two thousand, two hundred thousand, four, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and one dollars. As we've seen in many industries, the cost of goods and supplies have increased. However, Train of Kansas is holding this price for ninety days, which would put us into early June. To summarize the three items of the proposed project, the boiler replacement at the police facility, the automation system at the municipal court, and the automated system, automation system at the police department with the approved total funding of two hundred and eleven thousand. Staff has identified some options for city commission's consideration. One, approve the, approve the purchase and installation from Train of Kansas to replace the existing gas boiler and provide the building automation systems for the police and municipal court facilities. Post, postpone, and number two, postpone consideration of the purchase and installation from Train of Kansas. And provide information, I'm sorry, to a specified date and time and provide staff direction regarding additional information that you wish to, for us to pursue. Or three, vote to deny the purchase and installation from Train of Kansas to replace any, the existing gas boiler and provide the automation systems and continue to run the facility as is. Staff would recommend option number one, and I would be available for any questions that you might have.
Commissioner Longbine?
Oh, yeah. As I read through this packet, in the packet, this might be from Mr. Gardner. Has there been a cost improvement assessment and kaizen done on this project as far as energy savings?
There has not.
I think that would be a good idea to, to get that information. This fifty-five-year-old system.
Sure.
There surely ought to be a payback.
The, the way I was explained today, matter of fact, from Troy Reiner, our facility superintendent, that boiler is a, kind of basically a one-stage boiler, where when it has a demand for heat, it runs. So we're proposing a two-stage boiler, which would have two different operating settings, if you will. And that's where that efficiency and cost improvement comes, but to give you details about what kind of cost of cost improvements or fee improvements or cost savings we would have, I, I couldn't provide that.
Was there any information on the efficiency rating of the new system?
I'd have to find that out for you, if there is such information.
I'm curious about the projected service life of the new boiler.
Any, any guidance, Troy?
Twenty years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did the old one just exceed its life by thirty years, or we've just been running on, literally on fumes, or?
Well, we have a outstanding maintenance division and there is, we do check it and we do maintain it and it goes through a service schedule and automatic work orders go and check on it and make sure it's working to, working as designed.
Is the reason this being replaced because it's causing increasing number of problems? It's difficult to operate or costly to operate?
Well, it's the primary source of heat for the facility, so if it goes down and in the middle of winter, there is no, there's no backup currently. It is fifty-five years old, so the age of the item is the primary concern.
Or I guess ask another way, are there indications that it is trying to go down?
I would not know of any indications why it's failing.
Are the, and I'm asking this out of total ignorance, are the boilers in our buildings regularly replaced? I know most homeowners probably replace them. When the old one break. regularly replaced? I know most homeowners probably replace them when the old one breaks or it just becomes absolutely too costly to run. But I don't know how we do it with buildings this big.
We're in in the midst of a facility audit, try to inventory things like that and rooftop units, you know, maintenance items. We are certainly guilty of long-term deferred maintenance. This is probably a little bit more proactive than, it is an example of being proactive compared to our past practices. And as old as this is, it just feels like we're living on borrowed time trying to avoid.
Right. I mean, if it's scheduled for replaced two years ago, so I'm assuming.
Right.
Well, almost three years ago now, there was a reason proposed.
And I don't know if Troy is aware of any performance issues or things that led up to that.
I can add to a mechanical system, something like that, that age, it becomes a support issue as to whether you can get parts.
Yeah, it's, the boiler is actually down today. The the flu fan went out, received complaint that the chief's office was sixty-five degrees.
Oh, my.
So, yeah, there's there's ongoings. Last year, we had to replace some pumps. So there's there's ongoing maintenance issues. Plus, the the new boiler system, I believe, is ninety-three percent efficient. The sixteen, the nineteen sixty-seven model boiler is about seventy percent efficient. So we should be seeing about a twenty-three percent increase in cost savings for that. So the new system is actually a modulating two-stage system. So not only will we run on typically one boiler in fair climate weather like today, it will modulate depending upon what the demand is on extreme cold days, then it will kick in the second boiler and modulate it up to the need. So we're hoping to see some pretty substantial savings on our facility there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Ryan?
And this pricing is twenty-four thousand dollars over the last project estimate, not including the extras. The prices have gone up since the, as the projects been deferred. Is that correct?
It's twenty-four thousand dollars over the current, this year's request for the capital improvement. We have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of capital funds set aside for this project. We had twenty-one thousand dollars set aside in two thousand twenty-one, and that's remains in a balance in the building and facilities fund. So it is over from those combined totals, it is a slightly over budget due to those costing, cost in supplies.
Not getting any cheaper.
All right. Any questions, comments from the public?
Norman Manuel, Salina, Kansas. The first question I got, is the police department going to be moving to the new county facility?
No.
You're going to occupy the whole building?
No. We currently occupy a portion of it for municipal court and a portion of it for the police department, and then the jail and the sheriff's area are county spaces.
So you won't be needing to heat the jail area?
This isn't intended to heat the jail area.
I know. You guys are caught between a rock and a hard place. But that's what my concern is. If you're not going to be moving, are you going to be buying the old jail?
Part of a conversation that we need to have in the future is whether we have any interest in any of that space. I don't anticipate us having any interest in jail space. We may have interest in office space.
But you still got to keep them guys heated up. It gets cold over there, understand?
Just to make sure we're talking about the same, the current boiler does not heat the jail, does it?
It does not. It's only for the police facility, the city of police, city police.
That's what I was wondering about this, you know, because if you're going to shut down part of a building, you won't need this capacity.
Right. Any other comments? Any action to be taken?
Mayor, I move we approve the purchase and installation from Train of Kansas to replace the existing gas boiler and provide building automation systems for the city of Salina Police and Municipal Court Facilities.
I'll second that.
Been moved and seconded to approve the purchase and installation from Train of Kansas to replace the existing gas boiler and provide building automation systems for the city of Salina Police and Municipal Court Facilities. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. We are, six point five and six point six have been removed. Don't believe we have any development business. Do we have any other business? Okay, we'll now move to citizens forum, which is an opportunity for any citizen to come to the podium to address the commission.
John Blanchard, City of Salina. Get my money's worth today, Mayor. A few things here. First of all, just to kind of go back to the trailer park thing, yes, indeed, thank you to Danny Hugh, Danny Hule for fixing that up. But I'd also like to, I left out Gary Hobby, who I know that was an important thing that he was looking at doing is is getting a lot of that fixed up. And also, a lot of thanks needs to go to the North Salina Community Development Group that's been around for about ten years now. But their current president is Barb Young, and so thank you to that group, Barb, and and the current and past board members. The second thing I'd like to talk about is that I've heard a lot of talk in the community about the Salina Police Department staffing levels. Last I heard, the authorized level was eighty-four uniformed officers. From what I'm hearing, we're about anywhere from eighteen to twenty off of that number, puts us around mid-sixties. Ten-hour shifts, twelve-hour shifts, a lot of, you know, some overtime and stuff. My main concern, a lot of concern is out there in the community about morale. My main concern is about, are we staffed right for the safety of the community? And of course, morale is important to of our officers. They do hard work, and we ask a lot of them. So I'm wondering if you guys can address that today, when I'm done or when everybody else is done, and see if we can't get a path moving forward on on how to deal with some of that. Another thing that's kind of bothered me is I watched the meeting last night, and I don't, I don't really want to call out names, so I'm not going to call out names, but I think everybody knows who this is in relation to. We have a citizen Chad Farber, who is on the planning commission, comes to just about every one of these meetings, who gets up and is very thoughtful in his comments and so on when he gets up to address this board. And one of you chooses to just go after him on a personal level. And first of all, I'm going to ask that person if they would just please try a little harder not to go after a private citizen. And I think that you could offer an apology, and that'd be a really big thing. But if if nothing happens there, you are aboard. I think you need to address that. And the last thing is about the, about your constantly not listening to the public. And I'm sure you all are aware of the phrase, the consent of the governed. It refers to the idea that a government's legitimacy and moral right to use state power is justified and lawful only when consented to by the people or society over which that political power is exercised. So please, consider the consent of the governed, and please govern accordingly. Thank you.
Rosemary Ma, Salina, Kansas. Mayor and Commissioners, there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook and the radios here in the last week about the increase in crime here in Salina. And I know it's pretty much all over this United States, but I think we need to figure out a way to address what crime that these citizens are complaining about, whether it would be murder, or whether it's just break-ins, or theft, or whatever. And I think it would be a good idea to let the citizens know just where where the crime is being increased, if maybe the city commissioners, the manager, and the chief of police could maybe hold a citizens' information to address the citizens and let them know what crimes are going up and what they, what causes it, and what the police department might do to help get the crime back down. Thank you.
Norman Manuel again. I think you're lucky to the officials, you need to read your code of conduct. When's the last time anybody ever looked at it? Probably never. Power is very addictive. Elected officials, they got this idea that they are the supreme ruler. It's kind of like we're having a dictatorship in this country. On another point, April twenty-seventh, KBBE radio station announced that water ration is coming to Kansas. It's already another state, and yet you're wanting to bring new businesses here? They're going to take more water. As the businesses increase, your employees will increase. They're going to take more water, run, running out of water. As the population increases, our problems increase. And at this previous study session, the statement was made that it's a employee issue. We don't have employees available. Yes, we do. There are a lot of employees out here. But these companies that are coming to Kansas are taking advantage of these workers. They're paying cheap wages. The best information I can find on this one company that's overhauling aircraft, they're paying twenty-four dollars an hour. That ain't doing it. I was making that kind of money over twelve years ago, and I never was not a machinist. I wasn't a millwright. I wasn't a welder. I was just a forklift operator. I've also made eighteen dollars an hour some years ago. I was just an assembly line worker, no skill, no trade, nothing at all. These companies are taking advantage of these workers because it's cheap wages. That's the only reason these companies are moving here. They're taking advantage of the workers. But yet they sure pay their CEOs a lot of money, don't they? So to show you a comparison, in nineteen sixty-six, I bought a new Dodge Charger right here in Salina, a bacon Clark Dodge on North Santa Fe. I paid thirty-two hundred dollars for that car. And that was a high-end car. That was in October of nineteen sixty-six. By the end of nineteen sixty-six and into nineteen sixty-seven, I was making three dollars an hour, a semuline worker. No skill, not a millwright, not a machinist, not a welder, three dollars an hour. Now that new Charger is over forty-three thousand. That car's went up fourteen times. If you'd use the same formula, three dollars an hour then, times fourteen today, these workers should be making forty-two dollars an hour. If you, if these companies were paying these workers in this city, this county, these kind of wages, they could pay for these new houses. They could buy cars. They could go shopping. They could do things. But these companies will not pay it. But they'll pay their CEOs. You can go make twenty-eight dollars an hour making Frosty Flakes. And I don't take any skill to make Frosty Flakes in my time of. Okay, I heard a beep.
Anyway, I will say, though, the dearth of workers has inched salaries up some. Same old law, supply and demand.
I'll say, I wonder what Mr. Manuel's Charger would be worth today if he still had it in a restored condition.
Oh, if I just had the memories in that car.
You want me to repeat that over the air?
You want me to tell you the memories?
Well, he said he would, he would trade the value just for the memories that he had in the car. And we'll let it go with that. All right. But I can appreciate that. I like that. We are now going to probably go into an executive session unless it gets voted down, which I've never seen happen. Commissioner Longby, if you do us the honors.
Mayor, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for twenty-five minutes to discuss the subject of legal considerations relating to the South Park property with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged information in attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA seven five dash seven three one nine B two. The open meeting will resume at?
Five fifty.
Five fifty.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to recess into executive session to meet with legal counsel for the reasons described. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing, and Commissioner Ryan will be meeting us electronically.
Technology willing, correct.
Okay. Okay.
Just wait for the TV. Okay, go ahead.
Mayor, I move the City Commission recess into executive session for an additional 20 minutes to discuss the subject of legal considerations relating to the South Park property with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 75-7319B2. The open meeting will resume at 6:10.
Second?
They moved in second to recess into executive session for consultation with attorney. As indicated, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries five nothing, but back at 6:10. Take and entertain the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Can you do that again for Charles?
I move we adjourn.
There you go, I didn't have the other.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 And it passes four nothing. Commissioner Ryan is to head to leave. We will meet next Monday. All right, thank you.